Move on to item number four. Item number four, public hearing. Okay. Item number four, public hearing, has two items tonight. First item being 743 Barcelona Drive Design Review, followed by 45 Corte del Sol Design Review. Before we start into the 743 Barcelona Drive item, I'd like to ask the commissioners if there's any disclosures, conflict of interest, or ex parte communications.
We found out today that I am within the 500 feet and have to recuse myself?
Okay.
I visited the project site today to look at the story poles that staff installed. And I was approached by one of the neighbors and we talked a little bit about the project.
And Maureen?
And I've had some business dealings with the family, so I'm recusing myself as well.
So we have two commissioners recusing. And for Commissioner Quigg and Commissioner Davis, I assume you're going to wait in the back room and will be called when we resume the next item? Okay, thank you. Okay, so now we're moving on forward to 743 Barcelona Drive. This is a public hearing on a design review permit application to allow the demolition of an existing one-story residence and the construction of a new two-story residence in the single-family residential R1 zoning district. City of Millbrae staff, Jennifer, if you have a presentation actually for the board, I guess we can see that right on the screen. And for you at home and in the audience, you can see the presentation on the screen there.
Good evening Chair Wong and members of the Planning Commission. I'm Jennifer Lim, Assistant Planner with the City of Millbrae. Tonight's project is at 743 Barcelona Drive. This is a public hearing on a design review permit application to allow the demolition of an existing one-story residence and the construction of a new two-story residence in the single-family R1 zoning district. So this map shows the project's location and this project is located in the Cappuccino neighborhood as represented by the red dot on the map. This project is located in the R1 Zone Single Family Residential. It's an 8,400 square foot interior lot. There is an existing residence, one-story, about 1,596 square feet. And the project proposal is for the construction of a new approximately 4,525 square foot two-story, single-family residence. So this is the existing site plan. The existing one-story residence is to be demolished. And just to note, there is a 10-foot easement measured from the rear property line. The proposed site plan meets all of the development standards, including the first and second-story setbacks. It also meets the front yard landscaping requirement and rear yard open space requirements. The proposed first-floor plan includes one bedroom, two bathrooms, a powder room, an office, a living room, dining room, family room, kitchen, laundry room, and an attached two-car garage. The proposed second-floor plan has a primary bedroom, primary bathroom, three bedrooms, three bathrooms, and a family room. So this is a two-story ranch-style design featuring horizontal siding on both the first and second stories. There is a brick veneer feature that wraps around all sides of the building. And the roof is a charcoal-colored composition shingle roofing. The entry door and garage door are both wood and the windows will feature a white trim. Here's the proposed rear elevation and you could see that veneer feature along the back as well. Here's the proposed left elevation. The dash blue lines represent the outlines of the adjacent neighbor's windows at 739 Barcelona. The proposed windows are offset from the neighbor's windows. The two proposed windows at the front of the second story on the right side elevation will be frosted to mitigate privacy impacts for the adjacent neighbor at 747 Barcelona. And these two frosted windows are at the primary closet and primary bathroom. So this is the color and material board. In addition to what was shown on the front elevation, this slide shows the walkway pavers and driveway pavers as well. So there were a total of six adjacent owner consultation forms that were returned. Five of the forms returned were in support of the project and one form was returned in opposition of the project. The adjacent resident at 747 Barcelona Drive noted their concerns regarding view impacts to their living room and primary bedroom being blocked. The adjacent resident requested that the front of the second story be set back two feet in order to reduce some of the view impacts at their living room since all of the views from the rear will be blocked. So this photo is a photo from 747 Barcelona's living room. And the story poles were installed showing where the front of the second story would start. And this is another photo showing the view from the living room. The applicant provided a rendered view of the proposed second story looking from the neighbor's living room window as you could see on the slide here. This is the view from 747 Barcelona's rear deck with the story poles also installed. So for evaluation, in general, the applicant provided an analysis and found that the current proposal to be the most viable option, given the layout of the site and the amount of excavation to the rear that would be involved with the alternate designs. By shifting the second story back further to the rear of the property would preserve some of the views from the living room window. And the applicant did not elect to pursue the additional two feet setback claiming that there are structural modifications to this design and that the building would add to the cost. While staff is able to make the design review findings and recommend approval, staff believes that setting the upper floor back two feet is a reasonable adjustment, given the significant loss of view to the upslope neighbor from the back deck in the rear of the house. The adjustment will help preserve more of the neighbor's view from the living room while still allowing the applicant to achieve their goal of creating a five-bedroom, six-bath home. In order to approve the design review permit, the Planning Commission must make the following findings. Number one, the architectural landscaping and general appearance of the proposed building or structure and grounds are in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. Two, the project complies with all applicable development regulations. Three, the project will not cause significant visual impact to the neighboring views from principal rooms of the resident unless it is proven by the applicant that there are no other viable or cost-effective alternatives. And four, the proposal is not detrimental to the orderly, harmonious, and safe development of the city and will not impair the desirability of investment or occupation in the neighborhood in which the building or structure is proposed to be erected. The staff recommends that the Planning Commission receive the presentation, review the report, review the project, consider the public testimony, and approve the design review permit subject to the findings and resolution in Attachment 1 and subject to the conditions of approval to allow the demolition of an existing one-story residence and the construction of a new two-story residence in the single-family R1 zoning district. Staff is available for any questions and I believe the applicant is joined by Zoom and the homeowner is here in person.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask Samuel and Nathan, do you have any questions for staff? Okay. I have a couple of questions. Jennifer, maybe you want to stay there. So the size of this house, it's a very significant size upgrade. Just checking on the compatibility with the neighboring houses. How does this house size compare with the other houses in the neighborhood in terms of square footage?
The other homes in the neighborhood are pretty comparable. This project does meet all of the lot coverage and FIR requirements.
So if this house, it has a 4,525 square foot planned area, have you researched what the largest size house in there is?
I don't have that information offhand, but there are a mixture of one-story and two-story residents around the surrounding neighborhood.
Roscoe, any comment on that?
No other comment.
And then also, I know there's a grade on this hillside. I think the rendering doesn't really show it very well and doesn't show the other neighboring adjacent homes. But can you comment on the height of the home in relation to the neighboring houses on the left and the right side?
Yeah, the neighboring house on the left side is a two-story home and the neighbor on the right side at 747 Barcelona, their one-story would look just about at the same level as the proposed second story, as it is on the upslope side.
So the one up the hill is one story and it'll be about the same height? Okay, thank you. Okay, that's the questions I had. And, oh, usually at times, we talk about the neighborhood slips also. So can you talk about the neighborhood slips? And how many were received and how many neighbors were for or against it?
Yeah, so we did, six adjacent neighbors were notified. We did receive five slips back in support of the project and one was in opposition. And that was from the upslope neighbor at 747 Barcelona.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer.
Do you have one question, if that's okay? So the proposed project, the proposed second story, is the applicant asking for, or the front face of the proposed second story, does it align, how does it align with the front faces of the adjacent buildings?
So it would, the second story is set back 10 feet from the first floor. It would be in line with the windows at the adjacent neighbor's window at 747. So that's from their living room, as you saw in the pictures. And then it does in line with the 739 Barcelona.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if there's no other questions, thank you, Jennifer. So we have a routine process. We have the staff report, questions for the staff. And then for each item, we'd like to ask the property owner or the applicant to give their presentation, followed by any public comments. And then after that, then we use the same process so that we have, everyone has a chance to speak. Make sure that you fill out a speaker slip if you wish to speak on this item. So for now, we'd like to call the property owner and the applicant to come up if they'd wish to speak or make a statement about their project, along with the owner's architect.
Hello, sorry, there's specific instructions here. Hi, my name is Jaclyn Kong and I am the property owner of 743 Barcelona Drive. We bought the house, me and my husband, bought the house intentionally to live close to our families. I have a brother that lives in San Mateo, yep, San Mateo, and they just had a newborn. Welcome to the family. And it's very convenient for us to keep going back and forth to his place, helping out him and his wife with the baby. Along with that, my sister lives in South San Francisco. So Millbrae is in between both of those and extremely important for me and my husband to stay close to our side of the family to assist where needed. We also have grandparents that live close by in Burlingame. We have family in Millbrae as well. And so buying a house in Millbrae was always something that we wanted to do and very intentional. And so previous to buying this house, we were looking at houses in San Bruno, Millbrae, Burlingame, San Mateo. We put in two offers, one in Millbrae specifically, and we lost that one. And so for us to have this house and make it the house that all our families could gather to for holidays is very important to us. We are big on family gatherings. Me and my mom right now are planning Thanksgiving for this Friday and we're going to have a whole bunch of people there. And so to take the burden off my parents as that host family is really important to me and my husband, to make sure that his family from the East Bay have a place to stay when they come over and also my family can if they just need to throw the kids over at our house. Hence why we are making it as big as we are in the plans.
Welcome to Millbrae.
Thank you. We've been here, I've been here my whole life.
And do you have a, you mentioned the architect is online?
Yes, my architect is online. Sneha, do you have anything to add?
No, I think that, I think you've covered it. I think the design developed from intentional, you know, set of needs, as many homeowners, I think, you know, approach the design process. We did try to reduce the burden, like financial burden of construction on this particular lot. It is steeply graded. The house has been pulled forward to reduce the amount of excavation needed to push it back on the lot. And then there was special attention work through the civil engineer for the cuts and fills and all the grading on the site. The use of sort of low-pitched roofs was another thing that we tried to incorporate into the design to reduce the, I guess, visual hindrance for neighbors. I think it's also very important to Jackie and her husband to have a house that fit into the neighborhood, you know, both architecturally and aesthetically. So that was also a big consideration during the design process.
Samuel, Nathan, any questions for the applicants?
Yeah, so as mentioned in the staff report, there was alluded to the fact that you did an analysis of the request to do a two-foot setback and that structurally, that wouldn't work anymore. Could you go into a little bit more detail about what that means?
Yeah, and Sneha, feel free to chime in where needed. But if we were to push the second story back, that would essentially mean we'd have to excavate more ground from behind, which would be a financial burden on the entire project already. But on top of that, we're trying to keep the slab of the garage intact because that is quite expensive to redo as well in the slope grading that we currently have on the land.
Okay, in terms of the garage slab, maybe that answers my second question. So like, why couldn't, why not, like, in order to achieve the two-foot setback, either take two feet off the rooms in the front or sort of equally take these little slices out of every room in the second story in order to do that?
Yeah, we took a look at that when we were doing the plans and the feedback did come in. The general contractor as well as structural said that we would have to implement more foundation into the plan than the current ideas of it. And so that essentially would be another financial burden.
Okay, thank you.
Samuel? Okay, so I have a question for the applicant architect. Can you talk about the heights of the ceilings for a second floor and the crawl space and the overall height of the house so that we can understand the height limitations or requirements for your home?
Yes, so, oh, sorry, was there someone talking?
Go ahead.
Oh, no, okay. Yeah, so assuming a crawl space underneath the house, this will likely be in the realm of, you know, 24 to 30 inches. The floor-to-floor ceiling heights in the ground floor and the second floor are both nine feet each. That brings our building height from the existing finished floor, the top of the ridge is 24 foot 9 inches above that. So we do, we are underneath the allowed building height restrictions by the City of Millbrae's Planning Commission. And so again, that was achieved by low-pitched roofs and, you know, nothing extravagant in terms of interior finished floor to ceiling heights.
And have you considered any other roof pitches to lower that height or the roof pitch?
Yeah, we explored shower ones. It was sort of a discussion between the GC and obviously, you know, the roofings are, quite frankly, to having a roof that performs adequately with roof shingles maintaining, you know, a minimum pitch. I believe, and I, this may have slipped my mind, but I believe the roof pitch, if I'm correct, is five and 12. So we looked at, you know, pitches as low as 3.5 to 12, but aesthetically, we felt it detracted from the overall look and feel of the house from the outside.
How does the second-story roof pitch compare to the first story?
The first story is five to 12 and the second story is four to 12.
Okay, okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Sorry if I missed this, but what is the roof pitch of the existing home?
It is four to 12.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I think, thank you for that presentation and answering our questions. Okay, we'll move on to more comments from the public. We'll go with the in-person speaker slips first. So thank you for filling out the speaker slips for speaking. The first person we have here today is Rosemary Ma, 747 Barcelona Drive. Welcome to the podium.
Chair Wong, I don't give speech that much, so I'm kind of nervous. I just want to, I just want to follow up that you asked a question that what kind of view you can see from my windows. Two things I want to mention. One thing is every morning I get up around 5:00 to 6:00, I can see the sunrise. And it's really peaceful for me when I be able to see it. But knowing a year from now, this is all gone. So I'm just ask the owner of this house, my next door neighbors, which is not going to be friends after this, is that sit back two feet, at least I can have a little bit more view forever, once the house is built. I'll lost it forever. Right now, even when I go to my patio to see the sunrise, I won't be able to see it because the house is extended so far back. So I'm just, hopefully, and also, second thing is when I look from my window, the house next to 747, my neighbor, and the house next to it, which is like Karen's house. And I can see that house is set back a little bit more than the Karen's house, the planning, my neighbor's house, the future house. So I'm asking very little, just sit back for two feet and forever. And since I'm retired, if I go to work, it doesn't matter. I close my blind, I go to work, I don't see it. And all this time, I worked for so long. Now I'm retired and I start to enjoy my home and will be gone in a year. So I said, really, really sad, but that has to be done. Thanks very much for considering my comment.
Okay, thank you, Rosemary. Do we have any other speaker slips?
No, there are no more slips and no hands raised.
Okay, I think we've heard from the applicant and from the public. I'd like to ask the commissioners, do we have a motion to close public comments?
Move to close public comment?
Second?
And vote?
Commissioner Choi?
If I could clarify, what is the vote?
To close public comment.
Yes, yes, aye.
Commissioner Chan?
Yes.
Chair Wong?
Yes.
Thank you, public comment is now closed.
Okay, we'll move on to commissioner comments. One of you would like to start?
I guess I can go first. You know, I think what the applicant is proposing is within the code set by the city. And it, you know, the concern was raised by a neighbor. It seems like they made a good faith effort to investigate it based on what I heard. To address, to investigate addressing their concerns, based on what I heard, it doesn't seem feasible. So I'm not, I don't think we should necessarily ask the applicant to set back an additional two feet, but, and we can improve the plan as is.
Samuel, do you have comments on the project?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm still not clear on why setting back by two feet is a structural constraint. You mentioned that there's a, the applicant or the owner mentioned there's a higher demand on slab. I would understand that if we were, if the project was to preserve the first story. But it looks in this case that the first story would be demolished as well. And a second story is added. So it's a complete demolition of a one-story home and the construction of a two-story building. With that, I am in favor of adding the condition of setting back the second story by two feet as staff has recommended.
Okay, so, thank you, Nathan, thank you, Samuel. I have a few comments on the project and hoping the architect could stand by also. The rendering for this project, if you can pull that up, Roscoe or Jennifer. We should have had more questions for the architect. But there's some features of this rendering that I see that have questions about. First of all, when I visited the site, the height of the home, the elevation of the grade seemed very high. The driveway was really steep. And it doesn't really appear to show up on this rendering. So it would be good to have that. Usually, Usually, I appreciate the architect's drawings where it shows the relation of the side to the other homes' windows, so that's good, so it talks about, addresses the privacy issues so that windows aren't looking right into each other's house, so I appreciate that consideration. But for some more of these drawings, I would like to see the relation of the house and the heights in relation to the neighboring houses. One of the key features I think we look at when we look at the design of the house, when I look at the design of the house, I'm looking at the contour to the land form and so that, you know, if we're on a hillside, I'd like to see a roof lines that kind of are smooth so that the home uphill and the home downhill, there would be like a grade for the roof line. I know that if the uphill home is a single-family residence, they could go up higher, so may or may not apply in that case. I would like to see it recognized on the relationship of how this house sticks up in relation to the other homes. And then the same thing with contour of the land, we're looking at the sight line also as Rosemary mentioned, the front of the home so that they're kind of in a line, one's not sticking way out in front of the other ones, given that Rosemary recommended or requested to set back only two feet, that doesn't mean it's sticking out enormously. But I do see that from an architectural perspective, the rendering of this house, if we go to the front again, there is some oddity with the roof and the garage where the end of, the edge of the garage on the left side, it kind of goes under the front door entrance. And so that I see as potentially a design flaw, I'm not sure how the architect views it, but, you know, that height, that roof line might, might come up about, you know, off the door frame, seven and a half feet or so, and that might be around five feet, so someone's gonna be potentially hitting their head against that and/or water rolling off of that roof line. If the drainage isn't properly or someone doesn't clean their gutter, it's gonna be spilling over into their door frame there. I would like to see a lot more design details on these. You know, I really welcome the neighborhood upgrades and people updating their home and if they update their home, you know, that could really elevate the neighborhood and, you know, be a welcome addition, make it look brighter, cleaner, more modern, updated. But I would like to see more attention to design elements and some of these design elements could include that, the roof line there, the front porch might be enclosed because it looks like it's peering right into the side of the house. The second story of the house, it looks pretty bulky and massive, it's very plain, so more architectural details, if you're adding shutters or like a full balcony or some other, something of interest, might be good. I noticed that you're adding the stone veneer on the bottom portion of the front and then that wraps around to the side of the house, so potentially if you can, you know, trade off the value, we don't really see, may not see a need for veneer on the side of the house where no one could see it, but you might use some of those monies for those details and stick it to the front of the house. You know, the more complete rendering, some of the planting plans here, it shows a bush in front of, underneath the front window, but I think it's mentioned, it's mentioned sage, so that'll be a lot nicer than just a hedge. So more details showing the actual rendering of the type of plants to be used would be nice. Planting plan, if you're looking at like drought tolerant plants in yards, there's, it looks like there's a lot of grass here, but really unless you're really planning to upkeep the house, you know, things like grass are really hard to keep up and takes a lot of water and, you know, in this day and age, we're looking at water conservation. Wood siding, you know, that's also a big maintenance issue, although if it's hardy board may require less so because it's a fiberboard cement, but typically if you have wood siding, you're gonna have to paint it every three or four years and then you're gonna have to clean it off every year, so it's gonna take a lot of maintenance just for that and for the yard. And so having more of these architectural details would be nice, I'd really like to see that. Making use of the driveway, this is an enormous house, we're getting 4,500 square foot. In, you know, our days, the state and the, you know, politicians and the housing crisis, they're pushing to have more and more housing for people. And so we're starting to see a lot more of these bigger, larger developments and the state's really pushing us to accept them. But with that, nobody mentioned it, don't see tons of neighbors here, but, you know, with that larger house, there's gonna be parking issues, especially if every bedroom is almost like a master bedroom, almost every room has its own bathroom. So given that, it's, it's likely to be like adult-sized rooms who are likely to be drivers and have cars. And so if we have more cars, then we have a two-car garage here, but the oddity for the driveway here is that it narrows down to the front, maybe makes sense space or be consistent with the driveway, but then that limits, may limit the number of cars you can park in your driveway. So I'd like to see a little bit enlarged driveway so to make sure you can fit two cars in the driveway. There's, it looks like there's some type of retaining wall on the left side next to the steps, so if you're squeezing two cars in and you open the door, that's gonna hit, potentially hit the side of that wall there. So may want a little bit more space for that driveway and at least extend it out so that the right side is, is expanded out a little bit, otherwise you'll be parking on your grass. And then also, you know, this, this day and age, I'm kinda getting along here, but this day and age, you know, if we are having, you know, a lot of people in the house, could include older people, and so access from the driveway to the front door, you might consider steps from the driveway. I think the driveway, the top of the garage is gonna be almost level with the front door and the porch, so it'd be easy to make a walkway from your driveway to that front door and it'd make it a lot more accessible. And, you know, there's a lot of steps here, a lot of stairs, if, you know, you might think about ADA considerations, but in lieu of that, if you have a walkway from the driveway over to the front porch, it'd be good. So there's a lot of things, a lot of details that I'd really recommend to work out, your lighting plan, the roof line, driveway, the planting plan, access to the house, and this is just for the front of the house. So I'm tending to want to see another full detailed revision and, you know, this can only benefit your project, you know, to add these details and to have more elements to make it look nicer, to elevate the neighborhood, to pay attention to these details. Maybe planting plan even like a tree possibly or something low maintenance would help. So that's my thinking toward this project here. Okay. Given that, let's see, I think, Nathan, did you make a motion to move it forward or do you want to send it back?
Commissioner Wong, I appreciate how much fine-tuned comb you went over with the plans. You always have so many, a lot to say on a lot of them. I, I personally don't feel I need that level of detail in order to move forward. You know, Commissioner Choi is, Choi is more, you know, has more of a background in planning than I do, so if he thinks it's, the two-foot setback condition is reasonable and that's what he would like to see in order to approve, I suppose I'd be, like, I'm kind of indifferent. I, I don't have the ability to evaluate, I just thought, you know, if, if the applicant says it's really not feasible, then, then I'll take them at their word, but I guess I'll move then based on the comments that I've heard to approve the, what's the, to approve the design review permit for the demolition of an existing one-story residence and construction of a new two-story residence at 743 Barcelona Drive with the condition attached to explo, well, staff, how would you recommend I word this?
If the commission is, if the commission would like to incorporate that, it's not incorporated in the draft conditions currently, but if the commission decides in the motion, you just read that, the applicant, as a condition of approval, it requires you set back the front of the second story, an additional two feet from proposed.
Okay, and then with the addition of a condition to set back the upper story an additional two feet.
Right, from the front.
Right, from, right, from the front, yes.
Is it too late to make a comment?
No.
No, okay, so I, I wholeheartedly agree with everything that Chair Wong had said. I just didn't feel that was part of what we asked to adjudicate based on the question asked. So I would encourage the applicant and the architect to really listen to what Chair Wong had said and really think, if this is your one chance of building your, your, your family home for years and years, for generations, please look at this carefully. I think the roof line could use better articulation. And then I heard from the neighbor, and it's all right, I forgot your name, about your, your concern about seeing the sunrise and the sunset. I think if there were some sensibility to that or a particular viewing, I think I would be in support of a project that, that has taken that into concern as well.
Okay, so, Roscoe, if you could clarify, we either take a vote or send it back, right? Do we have to take a vote to approve or deny, right?
Yeah, so the current motion on the table is to approve the project with the condition that the upper story, the front of the upper story, is set back an additional two feet. And what I'm hearing is that the, the commission is open or is not going to mandate or require additional changes to the plans and that they should explore that, so, and then kind of work with staff on that. If, if that's something that the commission is directing, then we can work with the applicant on that and not require specific details.
Okay. Wait, wait a second.
Second.
Okay. Again, I think I feel that I would like to see it come back again and see these revisions made before us, but can we have a vote call, please?
Commissioner Choi?
Aye.
Commissioner Chan?
Yes.
And Chair Wong?
No.
Motion passes two, one.
Is that a pass?
Yep, motion passes.
Okay.
Approve the project with the condition that the upper story, front of the upper story is set back additional two feet and the applicant worked with staff on the comments discussed.
Okay, and with all projects, we have a 10-day right of appeal, if someone wishes to appeal. Okay, thank you, everybody. Okay, so we will move on to our second project review, 45 Corte del Sol, public hearing on a design review permit, application to allow the demolition of an existing one-story residence and construction of a new two-story residence in the single-family residential zoning district. Oh, and recalling back Maureen, Commissioners Quigg and Davis.